We will now call the meeting of the Waco City Council on December 6, 2022 to order at 3:06 PM. And I would ask, please join me for a moment of silence. And I would ask everyone to keep the Jim Hawkins family in their prayers. I know the funeral of Mr. Hawkins is going on just a couple blocks from here right now. Please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. As we kick off the meeting today, there's a couple of special recognitions that I wanted to acknowledge. The first is I wanted to thank the entirety of our city Waco staff, particularly our Parks and Recreation Department for a successful Waco Wonderland tenth annual. Tenth annual, and it really did feel like a Hallmark Christmas movie out there. It was really spectacular. My family had a ton of fun, but more importantly, the members of this community really had an amazing opportunity to gather and celebrate the holiday season. And I saw directors, I saw not only the Parks and Rec team, but directors from across the organization out there working. Clint was working the armband stand. I mean, just everybody was just an all hands on deck weekend. And so I just am so appreciative of our entire city staff. Jonathan and Megan and their entire team, thank you for all that you do to really improve the quality of life in our community in a really meaningful way. We're just also thankful for you guys to see all y'all here today. And I just can't thank you enough for making our community have these meaningful things. I think about my kids and other little kids in Waco. And these are memories that they were going to be able to carry for the rest of their lives and look back with real fondness on all of the things that come from a holiday weekend in Waco. So, thank you guys so much for what you do.
Mary Peal Allen. Add on to that, so you all can understand, you are our team that makes this happen every time. I was having a conversation with a woman that I know who, she, like myself, our children have grown up in Wonderland. And, you know, you mentioned the memories. So, thankful, you know, with social media, those memories that come up annually, you see your children grow up in Waco Wonderland. And it is incredibly impactful to me. And I know for a fact, because I had this conversation with another one of our citizens, that it is that meaningful. So, thank you for touching the lives of our future generations of Wacoans.
And I think in true Hallmark Christmas spirit, there will be a lot of marriages launched out of that last weekend. I thought it was a very, very romantic, enchanting time. My wife couldn't make it, but I felt a lot of, I felt a lot of connection out there.
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks to Jessica Maxwell and also Cameron Wolf, too. I left off, I know that our PD and Fire Department team also worked really diligently on the traffic side of things as well. So, again, everybody, so much. We appreciate it. Also, moving on to someone up here with us, Councilmember Andrea Bearfield was elected to our National League of Cities Board of Directors. The National League of Cities Board of Directors, excuse me, sorry. Councilmember Bearfield was elected to the Board at the 2022 City Summit in Kansas City, Missouri, to provide strategic direction and guidance for NLC's federal advocacy governance and membership activities. NLC is the largest and most representative organization for cities. Their elected leaders and municipal staff and advocates for city priorities in Washington by building strong federal, local partnerships. So, it's a huge honor that Councilmember Bearfield was elected to this position. It is rare and definitely is a joy for me to see Waco be represented at this level. And also, I'm just so thankful for your service to our community and what a great team partner you are and how blessed this community is to have you represent us so well with your excellence up at this level in an organization like this. So, congratulations to Councilmember Bearfield.
Thank you.
I just want to add to that. And Councilmember Bearfield, I appreciate you so much. You represent your district so well. You represent this council well.
That's right.
And you represent us well on a national scale, which I think is very unique. And you bring to this council and this community best practices from what other cities are doing. And that is such a valuable thing. And I just want to express my appreciation. Congratulations. You deserve it.
Yeah. And I do think, so grateful for your leadership, your willingness to go to these conferences and make these connections and develop these relationships, because not only is this great for you, but it is wonderful for the city as well. And thank you so much for doing this. We appreciate it.
That's right.
Thank you.
Hi. What, what are you?
Got here a little late, but we're just congratulating Councilmember Bearfield for her election to the NLC Board of Directors.
Whoa, wow. Congratulations. We're going to be well represented.
That's right. Very well represented. All right. Next, we'll move on to recognizing work session speakers. We provide an opportunity for the public to address the city council on any agenda item or during the hearing of visitors portion of the agenda. On items other than public hearings, speakers will be allotted one three-minute presentation regardless of the number of agenda items the speaker wishes to address. If you're here to speak and have not filled out a registration card, please see the city secretary's staff at the registration table outside of the auditorium to provide registration information so that staff can contact you if necessary. If you have handouts, please let us know at the beginning of your presentation, and staff will distribute those to council. And if you're unable to approach the podium due to physical limitations, a microphone is available to be brought to you. Michelle, is there anyone present who would like to speak on a work session agenda item?
Not at this time, Mayor.
Seeing no one is registered to speak, we will now recess the regular session and convene to work session with a report from our city manager.
Thanks, Mayor, and good afternoon, everybody. Do have a couple of changes on the agenda today. We're pulling Resolution 931. I'll be bringing that back at a later date. And then also we have changes in front of you that are redlined on Resolution 936, which would reduce the amount of the change order listed on that contract. This is being done to reduce, in reflection of reducing the amount of chip seal work that's not needed and to eliminate installation of the cure-in-place pipe sleeve. And as I mentioned, a redline version of the resolution is at your places. I did want to highlight a couple of employee recognition items, one of which is luckily already been covered, Winter Wonderland. And man, I don't know the young man's name sitting next to Megan, but man, you ought to be proud of your mama. That's all I'll say. She is, she's a rock star, as is her team, and real proud, as the mayor and council indicated, of the work that gets done out of that events team and the parks team overall. So, glad you could be with us, youngster. Second employee appreciation item I wanted to highlight, somebody that hates recognition, by the way, it's Nick Sarpy, our eventual officer. I'm surprised he's even in the room right now, because he knew this was coming. But in mid-November, we were pleased to learn that Waco once again has received the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. According to GFOA, the award represents a significant achievement by the entity and reflects the commitment of the governing body, the city council, as well as the staff, to meet the highest principles of government budgeting. There's rankings in multiple categories to get this award. And so, just want to say a special thank to Nick and Sarah and the rest of the budget team, as well as our other department directors that make that award an eventuality, it seems like, every year. So, Nick, thank you.
Congratulations, Nick, and to the entire budget team. It gives us such a peace of mind, knowing that we have a great team of people who are representing our community so well in this incredibly important work. Waco is experiencing a lot of growth right now. And so, there's a lot to manage in a, there's always been a lot to manage, I think, in a city budget like this. But there's even more in the season that I think we're in right now. And I'm so appreciative of you and your team.
All right. And lastly, I have a new employee introduction I wanted to make to the council. It's Dwayne Hills. Dwayne, do you mind standing for a moment? You'll see him about midway on the right-hand side. Dwayne is here in front of you, council, in public. It's his second day of work. So, we appreciate him. He has started his new role over at Cameron Park Zoo. He's our deputy director.
Oh, wonderful. Wow.
Real excited to get him on the ground at the zoo. He brings more than 10 years' experience in the zoo, as well as aquarium industry, holding different jobs in various categories, including management, education, animal care, and even has a kind of a past life as a social worker, which I'm excited, I learned about a few minutes ago. I'm excited to have that skill set as well on the team. Prior to relocating to Waco just recently, he served as the Director of Conservation and Education at the National Aquarium. He's served from coast to coast, it sounds like, Bay Area, all the way to Baltimore. He really possesses a deep passion for conservation, which of course, y'all know as a council, is an expectation of the AZA as part of our accreditation. And he's also just, just really a staunch advocate for kids and education. So, looking forward to your influence on our zoo and our greater community, Dwayne.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome, welcome.
All right. I have two informal reports in front of you this afternoon. IR 902, which is a follow-up to conversations we've been having related to the Waco Regional Tennis and Fitness Center. That includes activities and results from the past year. Take any questions on that, as well as informal report 903, which provides the council and the public with an update on what we expect to be new odors and potentially tastes in our water system. New in the standpoint of every, so often we have chlorine burns that reduce, what did you call it, Paul? What's the, what's the technical term of that film?
Biofilm.
Biofilm in the water system. So, we'll start that maintenance on December 14, 2022, and we'll expect it to take place for approximately 30 days. So, definitely working Monica's team and Communications Team on getting the word out so people can know what to expect. You might have a slight odor to your water, which, for about 30 days.
You said, from what I read, it was in hotter temperatures, right? More so than colder temperatures? Isn't that right?
Probably. Paul, come on. Bell me up.
I'm sorry.
Yes, you'll, you'll tend to notice it more in hot water, taking a shower, that kind of thing. Hotter water, coming out of the faucet.
I understand it's strange, but we're, we're going to want that. So, you know, I'm glad you're doing it, because we're going to want that.
Right. It's better than the biofilm.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We do have 10 public hearings on the agenda today, which Clint will cover later in the work session. Time permitting, we do have some long, long work sessions coming at you. If he's unable to cover it in work session, we'll cover it in the business session. We do have 27 resolutions in front of you today, and I'll take a moment to highlight three of them. The first is Resolution 922. It might feel somewhat insignificant, but it's really not. Doesn't involve money, doesn't involve big new programs, but it's an important move that the council makes. And that's providing for your vote for the reappointment of Dr. Sharon Shields to continue her service on the Cooper Foundation Board of Trustees for a term of five years. Dr. Shields has served us in this capacity since 2007. And in her role as Superintendent of La Vega ISD and really as a community leader overall, she really provides helpful, beneficial guidance and leadership to the Cooper Foundation. She also is yin and yang to another person on that board, Dale Fissler. And we need somebody that's serious on that board. And I hope Dale's watching.
Oh, yes.
Dr. Shields as a recommendation to you today for that important role. Resolution 929 is another, another I wanted to highlight. And it approves an agreement with grassroots community development for site development costs to develop three new homes on vacant lots on Indiana Avenue. This is a project that we're funding through CDBG grant funds, and the funding will be used for water and sewer line installation. And that'll support the development of new affordable housing on Indiana and North Waco. Excited to bring more of items like this in the future.
Yes.
All across the core of Waco.
That's great. I'm glad we're, I'm not a District Four representative, but we, we have a vacancy there, so I'll speak on their behalf.
Come on.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think this is a really exciting one, because this council really is deeply trying to deploy a variety of strategies to address the need for more affordable housing in our community. And I'm excited to see a variety of tools in the toolkit become more and more deployed. So, thanks to staff for really taking seriously the need in our community.
Not to speak after you, Mayor.
No, please.
I think that what we have hopefully conveyed is our commitment to decreasing the, the housing supply issues that we have, especially in affordable housing, but in all housing. And I think that, that between city management staff and Galen and the Housing Department, you know, everybody is throwing, thrown all in as to how we can get this done, working with our community partners, whether they be Chodos, whether they be private developers, to see a way to figure out how to make housing more affordable. And that takes work from both sides, from both their side and ours. So, I'm just grateful to our council, to our management team, and to our staff for their commitment to seeing that through, because this isn't a one-sided equation. It's going to take all of us. And I'm just, I'm just thankful that we're in that time.
That's right. Well said.
Well said, and really applicable to my last highlight, too. It's Resolution 932, which is the first of your "we all win" grant agreements under the Small Business Grant Program. These are four awards, the first four that we're bringing, many more to come. If you'll remember, council, we were piloting this program in East Waco. And so, each of these four are experiencing recommendations for funding. Some are for new roofs, some are for new people, new, you know, growth in their small business. So, I'm excited for Galen Price and the team to be bringing these forward as well. We do have seven ordinances on the agenda today. One's a first reading, and the remainder are second readings. The, the first reading is ordinance 948, which gives me the ability to use additional purchasing methods. And I just wanted to remind the council that it doesn't mean that I can go out and spend anything I want. I still have to bring any purchase over $50,000 back to the council for your ultimate review and approval. But this, this modification will streamline some of the processes that we use to go out for bid. And with that, Mayor, I'll take any questions that the council has on the agenda.
Any questions? The consent agenda includes Resolutions 2022, 921 through 947 and 955. Are there items the council would like to remove from the consent agenda? Not the consent agenda will include 2022, 921 through 947, except for 931, 36, 44, and 55. Councilmember Borderwood has filed affidavits of substantial interest for 22, 944, and 955. Next item on the agenda is the work session items, 2022, 904 through 906. Bradley, would you please introduce the first work session?
Sir, work session 904 is going to be our first. It's a discussion of the draft downtown parking pedestrian and street implementation plan prepared by Kimley Horn and Associates. I'm going to invite the team up to the table. Hopefully, we have enough chairs. Looks like we might.
Safety and number.
Amen to that. Amen to that. Come on up. Mayor and council, you'll remember that we brought you a contract back in December of 2021 with Kimley Horn to prepare an implementation plan to improve streetscape and pedestrian mobility and parking. And today, we've got Amy Balarli Highland, who's our Director of Public Works on the left. We've got Clint Peters, Director of Development Services on the far right. And we've got representatives from Kimley Horn to provide an overview of the findings and the draft implementation plan. And I'm drawing a blank. You were on my list to introduce, by the way, today. We have a, let me just say this. Her name starts with an L, and I'm going to give it.
Oh, my goodness.
She's from Wyoming. She's our planning manager, and she's amazing. Would you, Clint, introduce her to the council? Don't make her do it.
Yeah, I'll do it. So, this is Laura Waxstaff. She's our, yeah, starts with an L.
So, we're going to call you Laura with an L.
She is our long-range planning manager in the new position that was created by city council last year. So, she's been with us for about six months. And this is our first project that she'd be working on. And we're happy to have her here.
She literally has been a breath of fresh air. And council, you'll remember that you funded this position. So, very much appreciate each one of you for doing that and bringing, bringing her down from Wyoming, and look forward to seeing her work in other corridors down the road as well. So, I'm going to turn it over for, I think Amy's doing the intro.
Yeah.
And look forward to the council hearing this update.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We're really pleased to be doing this presentation for you, the results of our implementation plan. Mark Bowers is here from Kimley Horn to do the presentation for us. I just wanted to remind you how we ended up here today with this presentation. If you think back to the Washington Avenue project, we had some great streetscape ideas for that project, and we weren't able to implement them because of funding. So, we decided to take that opportunity to take a step back and do some thoughtful planning for how we want our downtown to look and make sure that we have a cohesive downtown as we move forward with doing all of the reconstruction that we're doing downtown. So, instead of having, you know, six different consultants with six different visions of what a streetscape should look like, we now have, we will be presenting you a toolkit that we'll use to help us guide our people forward as we do the designs, both in-house and with consultants for, as we reshape our city. So, I'm going to pass it over to Mark to do the presentation.
Thank you, Amy. And as Amy said, my name is Mark Bowers. I am a planner and urban designer with Kimley Horn. Very pleased to be able to present the results of this study to you today. So, we are going to go through this information pretty quickly, but we'll be happy to answer any questions at the end. We want to start with a project overview. And this was actually in the presentation that we shared with you about a year ago about what we would be doing on the project. So, really, one of the key things is there's, there's been a lot of planning, a lot of discussion that's happened in the past, a lot of good work related to downtown. We weren't being asked to reinvent the wheel. We were really being asked to take a look at a lot of that, add some additional layers of detail, but really focus in on implementation. And what are some of the specific projects that can be highlighted and moved forward to create implementation plan for the downtown area? And really provide direction, as Amy said, to city staff and to other designers that move forward with development in downtown. So, this is the study area. It's essentially going from the Brazos River. We have 35, we have 11th Street and Columbus Avenue. There's a little bit of a jog along Clay to Fifth. But one of the key things we want to point out is it was very clear that we need to understand and make sure that this plan is integrated with the plans for the East Waco area. So, the key elements that we looked at were visioning and theming, really looking at the overall streetscape environment, but also visioning for the different types of streets and the facilities, what we need to be providing spaces for. Streetscape planning and design, pedestrian mobility. We took another look at parking to get a better understanding of what changes have taken place in the last few years on the parking realm. And then we provided a lot of coordination and support with the team that's working on the University Parks Drive developments. And then finally, the key focus on implementation. So, there was a specific stakeholder involvement plan developed for the project. The primary of involvement was through an advisory committee. We met with them five times through the course of the project. It was made up of stakeholders from downtown and we, and East Waco. And also through the process, we really teed up information at each, at each meeting to provide them an overview and background and some, some background data and details. And then typically, at the following meeting, we would have some alternatives for them to look at and ultimately work very closely with them to develop consensus on their part on the direction they would like to see these elements go. There was a lot of additional stakeholder involvement as well. There was an online survey between April and July. We had over 201 responses. There was an interactive map that we'll talk about in a bit more detail in a moment. We participated in the Waco's farmer's market on Saturday, June 18, and got a lot of good feedback at that event. We had a Waco Walks tour, led a tour around downtown. On July 9, in the Texas heat, we had 60 people show up to walk around downtown and share their thoughts. And then ultimately, an open house to receive feedback on that final direction, the final recommendations for the plan. So, the online survey, this is just a quick snapshot of some of the background on that. But you can see one of the key things that came out of the survey was the perception of downtown today. On the word art, you see a key word that pops up in the middle, and it's construction. So, that's certainly understandable. But then perception of downtown for the future, folks said they wanted it to be vibrant, friendly, accessible, inclusive, walkable. You can see some of the key words that rose to the top through that process. The interactive map, essentially that map on the, the right-hand corner of the screen is the screenshot from the online map where people could actually go in. Every one of those little icons you see on the map is a comment that we received related to specific things that needed to be addressed in the downtown area from the pedestrian and streetscape standpoint. And again, I want to point out that all of the results from all of the community feedback, as well as the interactive map and the survey are in the appendix of the report, if you're interested in getting into that, that detailed, the detailed comments that were received. And then finally, as I said, that downtown open house, it was really focused on the draft recommendations. Folks reviewed the pedestrian and parking toolkits. We had approximately 40 attendees at that event. So, a quick snapshot of some of the existing conditions we looked at. If you can think of all of those downtown streets we had on the map, we looked at every street in this level of detail. So, you can see Columbus Avenue and Washington Avenue on this exhibit. We did a walking tour of every street. We identified all of the existing landscape elements, which we talked about with the committee. Streetscape elements, you can see there's a wide range of streetscape elements that are currently in the downtown area. But we also wanted to understand natural, cultural, architectural, and historic precedents along each of these corridors, as well as ground floor building use, because we think it's important to think about the streetscape environment as relation, in relation to the ground floor uses. A restaurant may have a little bit different approach than what a residential unit might have if it's on the ground floor. So, we want a streetscape that is flexible and can change over time to address those various uses. This is just an exhibit looking at the thoroughfare network. So, not only did we look at the types of thoroughfares, arterials, collectors, and local streets, but we looked at an added level of detail, understanding the multimodal network. We wanted to understand where the sidewalks, the crosswalks, bike routes were, to understand that area of influence that might affect the cross-sections of some of these streets. And then where we didn't have some of that information clearly available, our team went out and actually walked every street and identified all sidewalks that were less than six foot, those between six and 10 foot, 10 to 15, and 15-plus feet, where you don't see any colored line at all. It means that there's no existing sidewalk along that street. So, it was really helpful to have that level of information to understand where some of those needs might be for the future. We also looked at the crash data to understand between 2017 and 2021 where the crashes were. You can see the ones in red were suspected serious injury or fatal accidents. A lot of the green dots that you see were pedestrian cyclist accidents, which we're particularly interested in, pedestrian accidents with, with vehicles and bicycle accidents with vehicles, because safety is a key concern, and how can we improve safety on these streets? The parking study, we did a, did a detailed parking study looking at two different periods. So, we, and then we compared the 2019 parking study to the 22 parking study. We really wanted to understand what had changed since the study that was done in 2019. And really, the key takeaway from that is there's been an increase in private parking inventory and a decrease in public parking inventory. This is a, a map that highlights during the weekday. So, the, the red is showing high level of occupancy, and the green is showing lower levels of occupancy of those parking lots. We looked at it on both a weekday and a weekend. And the weekend that we actually were out there was one where you had your food truck event going on. So, we wanted to see, how does that change between weekday and weekend? The key takeaway related to parking, and we'll talk about it in the recommendations a bit more, was that there, there is not a, a undersupply of parking downtown. The issue is where the parking is located and how the parking is located, and how do you get people to utilize the parking that's there? So a lot of our strategy was not built on adding a lot more parking lots. It was more focused on how do we get people to utilize the parking that's there? So we'll have some recommendations we'll show in just a few minutes. So from all of that analysis and the close work with the committee, we came up with a lot of ideas to talk about potential toolkits for implementation. So some of the things that we looked at for parking, some of the toolkits we looked at were a valet program. So again, getting back to that idea of having a, a good supply of parking, but needing to get people to it, one of the things during peak hours, it suggested that there might be a valet program so that restaurants or other entities that have peak business hours may be able to utilize valet so that people can pull up in front of that establishment and have a way to get the cars to that parking, those parking lots that are underutilized. Sinage and wayfinding toolkit. One of the key things that we found is that through the years is when people see a destination, they'll put it in their GPS and say, that's where I'm going. And as they're going there, they end up at the destination, and then the question is, where do I park? And so they're looking immediately at that location. If we can have signage and wayfinding, and again, particularly within key events, that can direct people to where the parking is for those events. And then another piece of that may be some sort of shuttle system or better pedestrian accessibility to be able to get people from the parking lots to the events. Public-private partnership was a key toolkit that we looked at, as well as a curbside management toolkit that was really looking at, how do you utilize that curb space? And how can that transition depending on the need? So in some parts of the, times of day, it may be more for deliveries, and at other times, it might transition to something for the valet services that are needed. Some areas may have food trucks, whereas other areas may be on-street parking. And how can you really utilize that curb based upon the specific need block by block? We do think that the new municipal parking authority will be key to managing pavilion event and parking. It'll be one of those key tools that will be a part of, a key ingredient to this going forward. So the pedestrian toolkit, again, pedestrian comfort and that pedestrian experience, the more we can create that comfortable environment for people to walk to destinations, it will allow your downtown to function in a way that people can park in some of these lots with the clear wayfinding and a very comfortable streetscape environment, be able to walk to some of those destinations if they're just a couple of blocks away, as well as a street design toolkit that will look at specific treatments that can be applied to the physical design of the, the downtown street. Those were the three key elements there. So in thinking about that, one of the key things that we focused in very closely with the committee was coming up with not a downtown vision, but trying to develop a vision for what the streetscape theme might be, that overall urban design theme. And we were very pleased with the direction and, and ideas that we heard from the committee. And this is that vision statement for the streetscape. "Waco's downtown streetscape theme provides a timeless canvas for accentuating the inherent cultural meeting place where Hispanic South, industrial North, Wild West, Deep South, and emergent Black music collided and grew." And then through some of the guiding principles, we heard that it was important that the streetscape elements maintain their relevance over time, that they not be period-specific, that they be something that is more background and is compatible with the multiple architectural styles and historic periods, without being reflective of those styles and periods, that it provide a subtle tie between existing downtown attributes without proclaiming its own intrinsic characteristics, and that it encourage those downtown neighborhoods, sub-districts, to accentuate their own character through specific area branding. And that could be through signage, wayfinding, banners, public art, and aspirational design. And again, the thought is that these basic elements would be more the background elements, and then you can accentuate each of the key districts and cultural, and the rich cultural and historic heritage of downtown within specific streets through these other elements. So speaking of the banners, some of the key things that we're recommending is that banners be incorporated to accentuate some of those elements, and they should be specific. They should, they could be historically oriented. They could be banners that are representing special events, or it could be cultural elements that are expressed through the banner program downtown, and it can be changed out at different times of year to reflect current happenings in downtown. So this was just a quick sketchup model that we prepared to show to the committee and to the public on how that, that kit of parts downtown could start to create a family of pieces that were reflective of the key things that the committee had said they wanted to reflect, while, while still starting to be compatible with the multiple architectural styles and the other cultural aspects that would be developed in the future. These were the, the preferred streetscape elements that came out of the committee from the bench and light fixture standpoint, planters and bollards, bike racks, trash receptacles, and we even looked at concrete pavers. So we'll show you in just a few minutes, some of the special, some of the street prototypes where we've identified specialty paving. We're envisioning that as being concrete pavers. But also, there may be specialty paving that consists of concrete finishes, and we're looking at medium to heavy rock salt so that it's not just plain concrete throughout the downtown area. It's got a little bit more of a texture to it. So the overall downtown framework, let's talk street by street for a moment. So that overall framework plan, each of those lines that you see on the plan are representing a different character of street, and each street character is intended to reflect surrounding development and be a, a appropriate street cross-section to support the type of development that is being encouraged, while making connectivity between some key destinations. Some of the things we highlighted are, for instance, the commercial and mixed use, kind of in the, the reddish tone that we have in the center of the plan. That's highlighting not only the Franklin Avenue corridor, that, that commercial corridor, but also the silos. And we were looking at Sixth Street and Eighth Street as a potential to really create some synergy and some connection between some of the downtown destinations. We looked at that throughout downtown. So some of the streets that were highlighted on that map, the first one is the Green Boulevard. It is probably the most intense street of the streets that I'll be showing you today. The, the example that we have for that street, the prototype was from University Parks, but it's really being seen as a boulevard that creates a vision for that particular street, a really green street that is parallel to the river. But the intent is also to be able to move traffic and pedestrians through the area efficiently. And then for each of these streets, we created a little one-block prototype. This is the example from the green block that looks where you can start to have those opportunities for theming, for public art, for wayfinding, enhanced paving. So this really becomes that, that roadmap to future designers and engineers as they're looking at each street and starting to understand what the vision was for each of the streets. So not only does it look at how those elements are laid out, the streetscape elements, but you can see the bottom right-hand corner, there is a cross-section of every street. This particular one is showing two through-lines of traffic, left-turn lanes in the median intersections, as well as on-street parking in the curb zone. So we've done that for each of the streets. I won't go through every street in detail, or to that same level of detail. But the next street we looked at was what we call the activated street, and that was on Mary Avenue. And essentially, it was looking at creating that street that can carry traffic, but that really becomes your downtown pedestrian plaza, or one of your pedestrian plazas for events to start to take place. You can put removable bollards in. The idea is that there may already be hookups and tie-downs for tents, electrical hookups, so that it's almost a plug-and-play, ready for events to start to take place within that location. And then this is showing the overall image and, and the prototypical layout for that street. The next one is the Entertainment Street. Some of the key streets that we looked at for the Entertainment Street were Sixth and Eighth Streets, where I was talking about making that connectivity between the Franklin Avenue Commercial District and the silos. And so this is looking at the overall street cross-section, some of the prototypical images, representational imagery, as well as the environment that we would be trying to create on those streets, really creating wide pedestrian areas so that some of the things in the ground floor uses can start to spill out onto the streets with outdoor dining or other activities. It's a very pedestrian-oriented street. The next one is the Shared Street, and that would be Jackson Avenue. You see the existing street in the lower-left-hand image. It's interesting to see how many people walk up and down Jackson Street next to the railroad track with, with no sidewalk. And so it's really trying to formalize how that street works. It would be envisioned to have very slow-moving traffic to get to the parking along that street, but be very much a pedestrian-oriented street. And this is showing the general layout of that street, you know, from a prototypical standpoint. The next one is the pedestrian-only street. The example for the pedestrian-only street was Seventh Street. It's really, the idea is let's, let's formalize that and extend it by an additional block. So as it says, it would not be open to through traffic. It might be some access for deliveries. And then you can start to see that it's really creating that pedestrian promenade over a couple of block area where you can really activate some activities within that particular area. And so those are the key streets that we wanted to highlight with you today. We do have other street cross-sections for some of your typical local streets as well, and how to treat those, as well as your gateway streets into the community. But one of the key things that we talked about related to parking that we thought was important was the connection between parking and shuttles to get people to destinations. So we actually looked at where some of those major parking lots are, particularly the public parking lots. And depending on the type of event that's going on, we've identified three different potential circulation shuttle maps that could be put in place during peak periods when you have big events. And the shuttles, so essentially, we identified a, a route for the pavilion route, and the Franklin Avenue route, and the silos route. And each of those were envisioned to work depending on where those key events might be taking place, but utilizing your existing parking structures to have an efficient parking area downtown. So where the, the, the most important part of this, and our biggest charge, was those prioritized projects, and how do we get some things implemented in downtown? So the criteria that we looked at in, in highlighting the key priority projects was looking at stakeholder input. So again, through that key map, where people were placing comments, as well as through online survey and the events we attended, we looked at the potential for some of these projects to connect destinations and districts, not only those that exist today, but those that are envisioned in the future downtown. Connection between parking, transit, and destinations, creating a pedestrian and bicycle safety and comfort based upon that crash map that we showed you, as well as comments that we got from pedestrians, filling the sidewalk gaps and improving sidewalks where they might not be up to standard, as well as leveraging public investment within the downtown area. And this is that range of projects that we had on that overall map a little bit earlier. The, the project number is just, the stars indicate those various things, the stakeholder input, connection to destinations, districts, et cetera, that I walked through. So we evaluated each project based upon that criteria, and then based on the simple number of stars that each one received, that's how they fell on the priority ranking. The thing we want to point out is we see all of these projects as being priorities. It's just that some would be a higher priority than others. They're all important.
That's like everything this council wants to do. Everything's a high priority.
So we're trying to, we're trying to break it down into bite-sized pieces and saying, okay, what are, what might be the Phase 1 projects and Phase 2? And you can see that on the right, based upon those number of stars they received. The other thing we want to point out is we think this should be a living document. So for instance, if there's an opportunity that comes in with a new development, and by moving one of these projects that may be number nine or 10 on the list up the list, because it's really helping to clinch that project and provide your response, your participation in that project, we think that should be a critical piece in looking at this. So we, we want you to have the ability to change things around and leverage those investments as they come in. So as we look at that on a map, this is just a real simple graphic that starts to identify Phase 1, Phase 2, and Phase 3 priorities around downtown. So a few key additional recommendations, I say a few, there are several on the list. But everything doesn't fall into a project in that, that, that universe of projects that we showed on that list. So a few key things. We, we want to make sure that there's still a focus on continuing to utilize tax agreement financing to finance future public parking projects. We think that's a great opportunity to get that public parking in place. We think this implementation of the downtown trolley or circulation, again, just on an as-needed basis during special events, can really start to solve that problem with the parking not being exactly where people want to park for the event. Continue to utilize the PID for parking initiatives, including the dynamic signage and wayfinding that we, we mentioned. Consider implementing a vibrant banner program to celebrate the historic, cultural, and seasonal characteristics of downtown. The valet stations, we think, are really important, again, to, to solve the parking issue and make, make the businesses a little bit more accessible. Utilizing your new municipal parking authority to generate revenues to improve downtown parking, and then improving walkability and placemaking so that the pedestrian environment is more conducive to people walking two or three blocks from a parking lot to a destination instead of feeling like they have to park right in front of it. And then finally, reviewing your existing city ordinances and standards for their ability to support the implementation of this plan. So that is a big project in a nutshell, and we would be happy to answer any questions you have for us.
Thank you so much for your work on this. Kind of going back, do you mind going back to that prioritization chart with the one project, Phase 1 priority, Project 1, 2, and 3? And it looks like the lowest scoring on the project prioritization matrix is the turning Seventh Street from Austin to Franklin into a pedestrian-only street. Although, is in this matrix, to me, that almost seems easy to do, and that may not be the case from city staff perspective, and I, and I may be very ignorant on that. But would, would some on these be kind of easier to knock out, though they don't score as high on the matrix? Does that make sense? Like, if that's a simple, like, we just need to abandon the street, or something like, does that make sense?
Because I mean, technically, it's already done. I mean, it's just, you know, so I was like, maybe that's why it was low on the list, because it's kind of already done?
It's absolutely low-hanging fruit and an easy project. Maybe that should have been part of our criteria for evaluating the projects. We were looking at, did the stakeholders talk about it? Did it fill a gap? Is it, is it helping pedestrian safety? I will say that, you know, you've simply already, you've got something in place today that's working very well.
Right.
There is a potential rebuild and reconfiguration of the street that would be more costly, so it's not quite as low-hanging. And I think what we're saying is, keep the function the way it is today, because it's working, but potentially that, that reconstruction might happen further down the list, since it's already serving you as that pedestrian-only street.
And that would take more leveraging of public investment than just
Absolutely.
Going through council with an abandonment or something like that. Okay, thank you. That's helpful. I appreciate it.
I've got to follow on to Mayor Protem's observation there. So on this same little chart, which I love the way it's laid out here, but the, like, I'm trying to figure out, what is the, is the recommendation, like, on the first one, University Parks? Is it the, the typology, we should make it into a green boulevard? Is that, I'm trying to figure out, what, what is this chart telling me? I know you have it kind of ranked.
Yeah.
Are they saying we should make University Parks into a green boulevard as defined, kind of back on this other chart? Is that what we're saying on this whole?
That's exactly what it's saying, is that that cross-section that was developed for University Parks should be implemented. And what I will say is, we And what I will say is, we cheated a little bit right here in that we were coordinating with that team that is working on University Parks and with Catalyst and all of that group. And through that coordination, we provided a lot of feedback that led to this prototypical streetscape design. So, it's almost as if it's in the process of being implemented to this section, not the entire length, but those key areas. So, you can almost get credit for the fact that that's happening and start to check that one off the list.
Yeah, because I'm kind of, even if you go to Austin Avenue, Entertainment Street, I kind of, I mean, I'm trying to think, what else do we need to do to Austin to make it an entertainment street? I would say all of these are kind of works in process that we've, have either launched already, or kind of been, but this is great as far as directionally, kind of pinning it down. But, wouldn't we say, Bradley, that like, some of these are, we've not fully funded all of the typologies, but I think in our mind, we've, we're at least on some of these thinking about how to fund those. Or even, some of them, we've already found, like, the first one, University Parks, yeah.
Yeah.
We've got 11, 12 million allocated to that.
For sure. There's some allocations been made, and then, of course, on 11, you've got a contract on the agenda today for design services.
Yep.
And I think this was just helpful for the council and public to know kind of where the prioritization exists.
Definitely, yeah.
And then, which typology would we pick?
I just want to feel like, I don't think we're totally behind on this because we are actively trying to get downtown all fixed up. I mean, much to the chagrin of a lot of people with the orange cones and everything. But, I think this kind of brings a cohesive, kind of a theme and a vision, like you say. And I like how you've broken out the streetscape, the pedestrian, and the parking. Did you have anything else? I was going to go on and ask a few more. I didn't want to interrupt you.
No, I think that's a good line of questioning, though. I mean, I'm tracking what you're.
All right. We can just jump in whenever you want to.
All of us jump in whenever. Just talk.
I interrupted him. He can interrupt me.
Just because he's Mayor Protam.
Rises to a level of respect here. The parking, I was happy to hear from, you know, a third party that supply is not an issue. And, I mean, because a lot of us that travel a lot know that you kind of have to think ahead in where you're going to park and like that. There is that heat map, kind of a heat map deal you have here on weekend and weekday. Parking was very enlightening. I liked that. And I like your ideas about need to utilize what's there, also the signage and wayfinding, and also that our MPA, Parking Authority, will maybe help out with some of that, too. We may need to revisit this after we have, because there's a big parking facility going in on Mary, the Marriott AC Hotel that we've funded with some TIF dollars, and also the parking down on University Parks. So, being thoughtful about maybe some before and after effect of our observations here. I wanted to say also, on the streetscape stuff, the themes that you have there, and I don't know how, those are just kind of throwing out some ideas, and then, do we go to the businesses and kind of get feedback and try that? Because I like the idea of creating kind of sub-placemaking, and what you've thrown out there is interesting, but ultimately, do you go to the neighbors there and say, hey, let's name this place, or how does that work?
Yeah, the idea is just trying to get a basic palette, and that's kind of that background palette that unifies downtown, and then, really starting to express the richness of downtown, whether it's the historic, cultural, you know, all of those aspects, utilizing these other programs that could be, including the banners. And I think that's where there's a lot of room for outreach, to drill down into, you know, how do you express those ideas in a little bit more detail? We're trying to provide poles in place that banners can be hung from, and locations that public art could be, become incorporated into the downtown. But, beyond that, then, there's the whole definition of what that is and what are we trying to portray. And there was one thing I didn't touch on, if I can go back on the parking. We did, so the parking study took place late spring, early summer. There was, there were a lot of moving parts related to new development. There's a lot going on in Waco, as you know, all the development that's coming and parking structures. So, we did look at a snapshot in time for the parking that was being considered at those facilities. And what we found is, it was pretty much the same answer based on where you will be in the near future, that there's adequate parking, it's more about the location, and then, the only caveat is with the arena. It's always been envisioned that the arena is not going to be parked completely on site. So, that's where your shuttle, your walkability, and all of those things start to come in to really support that for key events.
I like how you're thinking about consistent elements to create a kind of consistent experience in the general area, but more specific, you know, flavor within the sub, the sub areas of downtown. But, because I think, and I don't know if these are, I guess, kind of quasar recommendations on how, like, the lighting and the benches and the trashcans and all that stuff, how that would kind of look. I like the idea, just the consistency and the efficiency of it, actually. I mean, if you have 100 of them that are like, you can buy 100 at a time or whatever, so.
That was where the committee landed. So, we literally went back and forth with the committee. They landed pretty quickly on direction on kind of the style of a bench, but we had to come at them multiple times with different ideas and different, you know, a wide range of streetscape elements to land on this set of elements. So, those were the ones where we were able to develop consensus with the committee.
I had one comment on, I guess, as I read this weekend, I wasn't, it wasn't, the Mary Street wasn't connecting to me, because in my mind, that we've always wanted that to be kind of a festival street eventually, as we have the Marriott AC on one end and Balcony, I guess, is way down there. And you go right behind Ninfas and all that, and on to the Sheldon Bridge and all that. Some of it's in the vision. But, as you explained it today, I think it's kind of consistent with what we're talking about. It's got some flexibility where you could close it off for festivals, but you still have, what do we call it, activated street. I kind of like that idea. You kind of mentioned the shuttle, and we're talking about the shuttle now in another context. But, you got to recommend that a shuttle is a necessary part of this area. I'm just looking at implemented downtown trolley or circulator buses needed during special events and peak periods.
And they say as needed, though. So, are you asking, is it?
Yeah, right.
In, you know, going back to the way it was, which was a daily event, or what you're, and sorry to
No, I mean, exactly.
Because that was one of my questions.
You're not the Mayor Protam.
I know, I can't talk right now. What you're, well, the consensus is that the circulator should only be as needed, or it should be back as in regular rotation?
So, the recommendation for being able to get people to the parking and to these destinations was that it would be as needed, that it would not be a full-time shuttle as it was before. Now, that's not to say that in the future, at some point, there may be the demand present on a
Because this is just to parking.
Yeah. But, it's really, the key is that there's flexibility in it, especially when it's rubber tired, to move it around depending on the event and have a different route that it takes. So, that was one of the key recommendations that came out of this, was those various routes it might take.
Okay.
That's all I had. Good report, and it gives us some guidelines on kind of moving forward downtown. And I don't know if it would be possible, Bradley, and it's always a moving target or city manager forward. On those top 11, kind of ballpark what general cost would be, and it's hard, but.
I'll be glad to get some numbers out.
Because, again, I think some of this has already been funded in, you know, the last couple budgets anyway, where we've got this sort of lined up.
Mm-hmm.
All right, that's all I had. Good presentation. Thanks, Amy, for the work there. Clint?
Thank you for the presentation, and I, some of my questions have been addressed, but the ones that I have left are, in reference to the private parking that you mentioned, the increase, the increased amount of private parking where the public parking, is that private parking that is free parking, or is it private parking that is paid parking?
It is private parking that is assigned to specific businesses.
Okay, okay. All right, okay.
So, it is not open to the public.
So, it is not for use at all? So, not for public parking at all?
Yes. Now, that's not to say that some of those private parking lots, they may be, you know, there may be the potential to have some partnership with those property owners and say, would you be willing to have an agreement with the city for it to be used during peak events for other, for public parking? But, at this point, that parking was not included in the overall public number.
And in reference to the valet parking that you mentioned, that's handled and managed by MPA? Or would that be something that the businesses would have to take responsibility for?
It is, I believe, something that potentially the MPA could be involved with in helping coordinate.
Okay.
Business owners and the district.
And Jim mentioned the benches and the trashcans and the continuity of that flow through downtown. My question is, is that there are or have been some design plans specifically for the districts, and how does that change? Because, you know, while I agree, if you order, you know, in large quantity, you know, that's more cost-effective for us as a city, but when you already have, and I think, I'm speaking specifically of the Elm Avenue District, which was designed to be reflective of the Elm Avenue District, how then does that change and was that taken into consideration?
So, we weren't looking at making changes to the areas east of the river.
Okay.
So, we're really focused on the downtown side of the river.
The CBD completely.
Yeah, the CBD, because we're not, by no means would we recommend that there be, because there is a vision in place. We just wanted to make sure that there was compatibility and that we weren't having a negative impact on that.
Yeah. No, no, I only ask because the Elm Avenue Corridor and Ridge Street was included in the overall project overview, and I didn't know if that was coming in a second iteration or in a Part 2 of the project, because that was, and I was like, wait, I'm confused. So, okay, so that.
We saw it more as an area of influence that we wanted to make sure we understood and were sensitive to.
And that you're, and that, I guess, that helped inform the streetscape mission more so?
Yeah.
All right. And lastly, to that, and Jim, you mentioned, you know, how, who, how is that actualized, I guess? Is it a conversation with the business? I'm only, when you said that, I was like, ooh, let's be careful, because I, you know, everybody's not going to have the same idea of what is reflective of their space and place in downtown, when I think, from the holistic approach, the mission takes on the totality of Waco's influence. I think all of those things are a part of the makeup, I guess, of our city, and that's what you were trying to convey?
Exactly.
Okay. All right, all right.
And some of those, what we understood from the committee is, some of those aspects have somewhat been lost, and there's an opportunity to celebrate them locationally within these districts.
Mm-hmm. And let's see, three, four. And so, and we'll have, in the next conversations, more, and that would be on whom to decide what that ends up looking like? Is that then, does that then fall on Amy and Clint? Does that, how does, how does taking what the committee has recommended, what you've presented to us, what are the next steps, I guess, is the question?
So, I think certainly, as these projects are starting to move forward, you know, obviously, there is coordination with property owners and business owners. So, I would think that through that implementation process, that there be additional discussions about what are the opportunities to reflect through public art or through other mechanisms, some of these elements, or through the banners.
Okay. Thank you very much. And the circulator is one of those things, I mean, I hear, I don't know, I get it because it's from a parking perspective from your lane, but I know that that's one of those things that if it was, I mean, somebody might be real mad at me right now, but I'm going to say it anyway. I mean, if it's a, if it's a cost thing, okay, because I was like, it was, it was pretty awesome. And was, you know, you go to cities and you have downtown circulators, and, you know, we were just in Kansas City, and their downtown transit is free. And, you know, I know it was one of those things that when we started, it was kind of bull in china shop that it happened, but I think that it was appreciated is what it was, and it's missed, so.
Mayor, Mayor Council, Kane here in the back. One of the ways that this will be implemented is through the
There you are. Go ahead.
Through including it in our overlay district from a zoning perspective, and that's where you get, as new development occurs in the downtown, it complies with these standards for streetscape and pedestrians and even the street composition as well. So, that will be the, probably one of the first steps of implementation, is to include it into the overlay, and that's where I think the council's formal decision-making will be in terms of what's going to be included in that plan, what elements are included in that overlay. And then, that, of course, will guide and inform the city as we do public projects, street improvement projects, et cetera, in the district that we design and build in accordance with those standards. So, I think you'll see really two ways of implementation. One, through planning and zoning through overlay, and then, two, through capital improvements.
Got you. Thank you.
This weekend, I sat here and I tried to envision all these things in downtown Waco, and I thought, this is awesome. This is awesome, especially the Green Boulevard that you would want to make University Parks drive into. The only other comment I have is, I agree with everything my council members have already brought up. I'm waiting to hear what my mayor's going to say, but I think this is awesome. I think this is something council members always look to, to kind of help our city to look what we want envisioned it to look and what our constituents and representatives want it to look. So, this is, this is something rare that we get to, to put our fingers in there, you know, in the dough and mix it up and come up with some good, and all these ideas are great, and I commend all the people that worked on the committee and you guys for leading the way. The only other thing I have to say is the lost Hispanic architecture. There never has been any here in Waco. There never has been. I was trying to think, as a little girl, walking all, you know, all over downtown Waco and coming from Ridge Street where we live, First Street, all the way up here, I don't remember any Hispanic architecture. So, there never has been one. But, I'm thinking, why not? Why can't there be something in some of these places that we have to go in and maybe art, I don't know, you know, but something to tell folks, there is a Hispanic community here in the city of Waco. Everybody's so surprised when I show up at an out-of-state meeting, that, you mean, they're Hispanics in Waco, Texas? Yes. A big community and a proud community that has always worked to make Waco what it has. I'm proud to be their voice, by the way. But, anyway, my two cents into this is, can we somehow, somewhere, put us in there and show people we're here?
I mean, especially reflective of First and Second Street, which was, you know, a black and brown community, so.
Yes, it was. As it was. All the way from La Salle, all the way to St. Francis. There were businesses, Hispanic businesses all over the place. But, of course, Urban Renewal did away with a lot of that, did away with the Hispanic community as well. Because I can remember walking from First Street to downtown and waving to all the families that lived in and around that area. Anyway, I'm getting that lived in and around that area, anyway, I'm getting off the subject. If there's some way, Bradley, in art, a street name, something, you know, something that signifies or tells folks, hey, there is a Hispanic community in Waco. That, that's the only, that's the only criticism I have of my city that I love so much, is that we don't have Hispanic architecture anywhere except for St. Francis Catholic Church.
That's well noted, council member, and I think that we've got some really neat things that we're responding to your voice and the council's voice on the Riverwalk that we're going to install by the arena, but I hear a greater call in your words to maybe even have even more. And so let us soak that up and start, start it kind of working around our brains on where we can, where we can find us an opportunity to make a statement.
Thank you, I, I appreciate that, Bradley. And I really like the presentation. My congratulations to everybody in the committee, everybody that worked, I think they did such hard work and brought us some, some really good, good dreams for us as council members to look at and to envision. So thank you for that.
I, I agree with Councilmember Reese, I was thinking about St. Francis, and I was like, because that, to me, is such a landmark-
Yeah.
-piece of architecture, and then even in my mind, and maybe I'm wrong, I could be wrong about this, but I was thinking about the old fire station on Columbus, like 1019 Columbus, I don't know if you can picture that?
I can, but I don't-
It kind of feels like a Hispanic, maybe I'm wrong, southwestern maybe more.
Southwestern, I-
Yeah, maybe not, but I totally agree with you, and I think that, that, you know, St. Francis is one of those, there's, there's these angles you catch it at, and you're like, man, that is such a jewel-
It is.
-architecturally in, in our community.
I remember my aunt told me once upon a time that when it was being built, this is my great aunt, that the Hispanic community raised the funds for that church to be built, and she said they used to have raffles and fundraisers and tamale dinners and all that. So she, she talked a lot about the work that she helped to help build St. Francis. So that was something that the Hispanic community back in the day did, and that's why I think everybody at that time was so proud of St. Francis, because everybody had a little, I even have my name in one of the papers up there-
Oh, really?
-at St. Francis, so, I mean, we all have-
Yeah.
-put our fingers, anyway, I'm getting off, thank you for the report.
That's great. I liked this report so much, I think this is excellent, and the type of proactive strategic efforts that I hope that will continue to apply to make Waco a beautiful city. I like the vision statement and guiding principle, and I like how you referenced this as a living document, I think we'll continue to refine this always, but the note to the history and the culture, I think, is so important, and I, I appreciate that. I also like what you said about, you know, having a cohesive feel, but also creating individuality in the districts, and I think that's something that we can continue to drill down on, because I like each pocket of downtown having its own vibes, but I also like compatibility at some level too, so that'll be something that we can continue to, to work through as we go. And the, again, the presentation and the work is, is really excellent. I think that we can continue to refine a little bit, the planners, the, the specific streetscape elements, that's something that I would like to continue to refine a little bit. And then I think the prioritization matrix was a great start to build a conversation on, and we'll be able to keep discussing that as well. Couple questions I had, is, does this comment anything about power lines or the burying of power lines?
So we did not incorporate specific recommendations, obviously the cost associated with that-
Sure.
...is, is so high. Ideally, if you, if you can make that happen with specific projects, it's a great thing to do. Other things that we've seen is, if they can't be buried, if they could be located in alleyways, that would be preferable, but understanding that's, that's a longer-term type of thing that you try to accomplish at piecemeal as you can.
Well, I appreciate that, I just think that, again, if we're doing comprehensive work on some of these areas, and there's going to be some big old nasty power line in the middle of it all, it really robs it a bit, I do understand there's cost restrictions on that, and we'll balance that out, but I think that might be something to note as well. In the, in the part point, you mentioned the pedestrian toolkit, I felt really clear to me what the, what the actual parking toolkit was, like the specifics of that, the pedestrian toolkit felt more just kind of like how you want it to feel, is it, and is that, is that, am I right about that? Is that kind of what we're hoping for there?
Yes. The three, the three key things are creating not only what it looks like and feels like, which is more the pedestrian experience, but also the comfort. So in other words, you want to create shaded areas, you want to create sidewalks that are inappropriate width to where pedestrians feel comfortable walking on them, and then the, the street design toolkit is getting into this, some of the specific streetscape treatments.
And so, is there like an actual, like binder that you'll give to the city staff that has that, like the specific recommendations in that?
Yeah, so- The report actually has some specific examples of each of these types of things that can be incorporated, so there were some, there's more detailed examples for, and it may be in one of the, it may be in the appendix.
Great, I'm just trying to drill down, I mean, all this sounds good, I think we know that, but my hope is that if there's a, in my head, that if there's a toolkit, it's like, this is specifically what those tools are.
Yeah.
Shade, benches, planters, like-
I will say that these toolkits that we've identified, those prototypical streetscape plans, if they are implemented, would be incorporating all of these toolkits, because they're all, they're all included, they're, they're just good prototypical designs for each of those street types.
Great. One other comment I had is, is that, you know, one of the things I think that this council is very cognizant of, I think our staff is very cognizant of, is construction fatigue. It wasn't lost on me in the word cloud, that the biggest word was construction when people think of downtown, and, and I think there's been a lot of graciousness towards that, the amount of construction, because people are excited about seeing this work get done for so long. I mean, I think it's like a, a running joke, is people will come up to me and say, hey, when are you going to fix up these streets, they're in such bad shape, and then the next person will come up and say like, when you quit fixing these streets, there's too much construction. And so it's this tension that I think we're all feeling of, like, we can't leave the, our public infrastructure as it is, we need to make sure that we have utilities and, and good streets, but also there's pain in construction. I think that's just something that we have to continue to manage. I love that one of the things we're proving today are some small business grants for people whose businesses have been impacted by long-term construction projects. So we're trying to think outside the box, and certainly should celebrate that, but I think that as we're looking at the timing of these projects, as much as I want to get it all done quickly, I think we also have to think through the real-life impact that, that having a bunch of streets torn up has to people's commutes and day-to-day lives. So again, it's a balancing act, because the work needs to be done, we want this to be a beautiful city with beautiful streetscape, but we also recognize there's some fatigue. I, I think that, we mentioned the, the overlay and this being incorporated as a part of the overlay, I think we need to separately from this, relook at our overlay, including expanding its boundaries, as well as look at some of the rules in the overlay, like I know for, like right now, you can have, you can't have, or at least you're not supposed to have downstairs boarded-up windows for, for the first floor, but you can board up windows on the second and third floor in the downtown overlay. I think we should look at that, I think there's parts of our overlay where we allow barbed wire still on the tops of fences, and we should look at amending the boundaries of our overlay to prohibit barbed wire, and I think that, again, the hope is that there'll be, these properties will be in either TIF one or TIF four, and that there'll be a facade improvement grant, that if people need to get, you know, the, the type of fencing that we're going to require is a little more expensive, there'll be a grant that helps pay for that. But I think that's something that we need to continue to refine, and, and this is my request for a future agenda item on-
Thank you, sir.
-that.
Quite a long request.
So, again, incredible presentation, I'm, I'm really, really thankful for this, and I think that this is, again, the level of proactivity and strategy that we definitely want to deploy, and I think it was our team and Kim Lee Horn for their great work. Thanks, guys.
Alright, Mayor and Council are next, let me just hop off, I was looking a lot at Spanish architecture here, Councilmember Rodriguez, so let me get back to my script here.
That's okay.
That's okay, keep on looking.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Redirect, I just sent Jennifer a picture of a government building in Madrid.
Oh, wow.
So I'm excited to think about your request there. Our second work session, I'm going to invite Fiona and the arts team to the table, scanning the room, did Fiona jet on us? Oh, there she is, okay, good.
She's jetted as we speak.
Yeah, we, we brought you two big work sessions today, they're, they're both pretty meaty, and, but Fiona and the team are going to come up and give a presentation discussion on the Bridges to Public Art, a strategic plan for public art in Waco, and definitely appreciate Fiona's leadership in this, as well as Lisa Blackman and a number of her staff members on our team. Creative Waco's really dove deep here and engaged, as you'll hear, with quite a few folks around the community to develop a draft plan. Today, we've got Jen Crava on our left here, Director of Programming and New Initiatives at Forecast Public Art, of course Fiona's no stranger to anybody, Executive Director at Creative Waco, and definitely thankful for Amanda Dyer being here as well from Creative Waco. Fiona, why don't you do a little introduction for the council and the public and let them know what you've been working on?
Absolutely, thank you so much, thank you, Mayor, thank you, City Manager, thank you, Mayor Protan, thank you to all our partners and colleagues in the city of Waco, and then also thank you to all the people from our cultural and creative community who have come out today to be curious about what Jen is about to say, thank you so much. Those beautiful faces out there, it's really good to see you. I'm Fiona Bond, I'm Executive Director of Creative Waco, I'm here with Amanda Dyer, who is our Director of Public Art and Development, and then Jen Crava from Forecast Public Art, who is their Director of Programming and a consultant, and she's headed up this program from Forecast, and we're very grateful to her for the really sterling work that she's done. So just to give you a little bit of context about Creative Waco and why we're in front of you today with this, this study, we of course are the backbone arts organization tasked with growing and supporting a thriving cultural and creative community in Waco and McLennan County. Why do we do this work? Because when you analyze strong communities the world over, they share a commitment to strategic investment in cultural growth. It's been shown to be an activating influence for achieving so many of the goals that we all share as a community. And in other words, a strong and vibrant arts and cultural sector is a key ingredient for building and sustaining a well-rounded, lively, distinctive community that we're all proud to call home. We have had a growing partnership with the city since we first began as an organization in 2015. In 2016, we entered into our first contract as the city's cultural arm or local arts agency, and that scope has expanded over time. And besides our own projects and programs, we distribute and evaluate resources for cultural programming, using the cultural plan as a strategic blueprint. That plan was developed in 2015 to give arms and legs of implementation to the community's cultural growth goals, as part of our bid to become a state of Texas cultural district. And then we manage the Waco Downtown Cultural District, including reporting and data gathering on economic impacts of the arts and cultural sector. We guide conversation and implementation around cultural development and infrastructure, including amplifying local dollars to bring in new resources for arts projects and programs. And actually, for every dollar that is invested at city level in arts and cultural programming, the work that we do means that $2.50 comes back locally just in tax revenue from the work that we do. I'm very proud of that. We support arts leadership and entrepreneurship, growing the workforce, small businesses, and career development, that side of the sector. And then we've come to manage over a million dollars in new public art commissions and installations since we started. So why are we thinking about public art and why are we thinking about it now? We already have some really strong pathways and an increasing number of great public art projects under our belt, but we don't yet have any overarching goals which help us make decisions around public art. Waco is flourishing and there is great new opportunity for both developers and artists, and as the art collection grows, we want to begin thinking more consistently about dedicated support, not just for commissioning new artworks, but also for managing the portfolio of public art, from accepting, installing, changing, maintaining, and even deacquisitioning public art, as we become more mature in the collection that we have as a community. We want to have a framework for good decision-making about public art and our goals and standards in relation to quality, quantity, location, agency, values, equity, who gets to make decisions, how are decisions made, where should public art go, why should it be installed, what should it say, how much should we have, how long should it last for, all those kinds of questions. And we'd like to clarify the different roles and responsibilities for each of the stakeholder groups that is part of this conversation. One very good reason for doing this project now is that it's never been done before, we get to be the generation that thinks about what strategy might look like, there hasn't been a public art strategy for our community, at least in living memory, and so we have the privilege of being the ones who do that. And then, of course, we had an opportunity because we got National Endowment for the Arts funding to do this project, thanks in part to city support. So the city partnered with us and wrote, Bradley, thank you for your letters of support. And the, our former mayor was the one that partnered with Bradley to put in letters of support, along with Deidre Emerson, for a grant that, from National Endowment for the Arts, which allowed us to then hire Jen and do this work. So having resources that allowed us to do a really deep dive into this was a wonderful opportunity. The decisions we make will define how Waco looks and feels for generations to come, that's a really rare privilege and responsibility. And with that, I'm going to ask Amanda to outline the objectives of this project.
So as we began the strategic planning process, we created a set of objectives to develop and guide our work after conversations with various stakeholders, and those included city of Waco and Creative Waco staff, as well as the Waco Downtown Cultural District Advisory Committee. So what we were looking to do is to engage diverse community stakeholders in vision casting and goal development for our public art strategic plan, defining strategic priorities and pathways for creative placemaking that represents our entire community, especially traditionally underrepresented-
Stories and people, thank you. We wanted to ensure that the city of Waco and other key partners, including City Center Waco, our Chambers of Commerce, and others, are knowledgeable about how and why public art should be prioritized in future planning and that they could speak to that. We also want to generate new financial resources for democratizing and diversifying the public art commissioning process, and then also evolve enthusiasm for public art into a community-wide passion for creative placemaking. So now I'm going to turn everything over to Jen Crava from Forecast Public Art to introduce Bridges to Public Art, a strategic, a strategic plan for public art in Waco, Texas.
Thank you, it's great to be here, thanks so much for having me. My name's Jen Crava, as you heard multiple times, I'm Director of Programming at Forecast Public Art. We are located in the state of Minnesota, but work all over the country, and are a nonprofit organization that started in 1978, so we've been doing this work for a few years. I'm going to share with you why we created a plan, what we heard from community members, and some of the recommendations that we've developed based on what we heard. and some of the recommendations that we've developed based on what we heard. Uh, before we get started though, I want to give a shout out to local artist Raj Solanki. He designed what you see on the slide deck here and also designed the plan, so, big shout out to him, he's super talented and we're very lucky to have him as a part of this project.
What's his name again?
Raj Solanki.
I love this artwork, I mean, it's like, reminds me of a comic book thing, I love it.
Exactly, yep, awesome. So, why, what are we doing and why? So, for some national context, there are over 350 public art programs across the country that have dedicated funding and staff associated with them and are hiring artists to develop and install projects. Public art planning is a best practice as it addresses questions like what Fiona said, what is public art, what is it not? Where should it go, what should it look like, who should be paying for it? How do you spark an idea for a public art project, and many other questions? A public art strategic plan formalizes processes in order to get, to best aggregate the many arts and cultural assets across the city, to support and guide the work of creative organizations, city staff and officials through a community-focused, asset-based strategic planning process. We see communities that have public art strategic plans are able to meet larger community goals like workforce development, community engagement, and economic development by expanding public and private partnerships and investments to benefit the community. Additionally, public art strategic plans ensure that goals are sustained over the long term, creating opportunities for everyone in the community to play a role and provide insight into the public art and placemaking opportunities in their city, aiding in the creation and maintenance of a vibrant, attractive place for people to live, work, and visit. Each community's public art strategic plan is unique to the needs of that community. As Fiona and Amanda have shared, there's a strong foundation already built in Waco, and this plan is an opportunity to continue building on the $4 million in public artworks that have been commissioned and installed by both local and national artists through partnerships between the city, Creative Waco, Cultural Arts of Waco, and other local arts organizations and individuals. And this positions Waco as a key arts and culture, culture destination. Creative Waco has been a partner working with the city in public art and creative placemaking initiatives in a growing capacity since 2018. They've been working in a reactive way as projects come up. There's also been great work done by the city attorney and deputy city manager on the percent for art drafting, and there's just so much growth in Waco right now to capitalize on. As Fiona mentioned, the city has not done a strategic plan for public art before, and while there are great things happening, the current model is inherently reactive, as you've heard me say. Having a plan will allow you to be strategic about the projects that you're taking on, where funding is coming from and going, and how community members can be involved in decision-making. The time is right to strategize these things and set up a proactive process and program structure that helps make good decisions so that the entire community can benefit from the beautiful and wonderful public art that will be in places that are inherently enlivened and activated by its presence. So, you could stay on the path that you're on now, continue to piece projects together without a unifying umbrella or procedures. Things would stay the same for a little bit, but as more projects come in, you'll probably start to move backwards as you won't have the structures in place to sustainably develop all of the public art and creative placemaking projects that arise as Waco continues to grow. Or, you could move forward and capitalize on opportunities for funding, develop the workforce by creating a pathway between craft and industry for artists and arts admins, enhance quality of life for residents by bringing them together around public art and beautifying the city further, facilitating economic development by creating a world-class public art collection that draws in visitors and residents to support creative endeavors and other local businesses. As an example, Chalk Waco alone brings in $4 million to the local economy. And then, doing all of this in a sustainable way that's unique to Waco's context, I think that's really key. The plan that we've written shares ways to do all of these things, it reinforces the goals of the city's 2040 Comprehensive Plan and the Waco Cultural Plan. It's based on what we've heard from the Waco community about their desires for public art. So, let's talk a little bit about, sorry, I'm behind in my slide. Uh, let's talk a little bit about, um, the process that we used. The focus that, uh, that was part of our, uh, strategic planning process was to engage community in many different ways. We hired three local folks who are very creative to be a part of our team, you can see Raj up here, Chris McGowan and Tashida Bibles, to be our eyes and ears on the ground when we couldn't be here, and engage community members in really creative ways. That community engagement was a key component in the development of the strategic plan. And in, in addition to the work that the three artists you see on the, on the screen did, we also did, um, a bunch of one-on-one conversations. We developed core values and guiding questions with the Cultural District Advisory Committee. We facilitated several focus groups, um, and then, like I said, pop-up creative engagement activities were conducted by our local team members. And we did a community-wide survey in both English and Spanish with 207 responses. Our local team popped up at a variety of different events, including the Food Truck Showdown, Chalk Waco, the Juneteenth Celebration, and Animal Day at East Waco. Through all of these events, we talked to about a thousand people. We connected with kids and adults through creative activities like chalk making and pinwheel making. We learned that there is overwhelming support for all types of public art in all spaces in Waco. We learned that statues and sculptures and parks and trails had the most amount of interest from community members, and that banners and flags had the least amount of votes for any type of public art. We learned that people are interested in artworks that can be experienced in person and that are a mix of interactive and static made by local and national artists. And we learned that people want public art spread across the city, not just concentrated in one area. And finally, we learned that there is strong general support around public art that attracts tourism, provides entertainment, promotes diversity, educates community members, boosts the economy, beautifies spaces, and creates accessibility. So, in addition to those creative pop-ups, um, we conducted that survey, as I said. Through the survey, we learned that there is overwhelming support for all types of public art in all spaces. We learned that, um, there's overwhelming support for public art distributed across Waco with events, programming, and activities associated with it. We learned that people think public art should beautify the community and give a sense of pride, uh, to folks who live here, that it should provide opportunities for fun and entertainment, it should make Waco feel distinct from other communities, that it can connect people to each other through sharing stories, and that it helps artists make a living as part of the workforce. People are interested in public art being funded in a variety of ways with generous support for a percent for art ordinance for new development in Waco. Wacoans want to prioritize public art being maintained and preserved, events, programming, and activities around public art, consistent and sustainable funding, processes, and maintenance for public art, support for artists to build their careers and professional skills, and cross-sector collaborations and relationship building between organizations and community members to make the program strong and build opportunities for everyone. We learned a lot more, so I'm going to summarize a few more points. We learned that it's important to bring community into the process in as many ways as possible. This will help to create sustained community support and will also diversify the collection by keying in on stories that can be told through public art projects, as well as what kinds of public art mediums people want to see and experience. Think about a broader definition of public art in order to attract a variety of artists, including youth and audiences, and to create an enticing program for developers, sponsors, and other possible partners to participate in the program. This will also help to take advantage of the huge growth happening right now and will enhance possibilities for collaboration across sectors. It's important to build a program that's aligned with staff capacity. As we've said, the staff does not, or the current, excuse me, the city currently does not have a dedicated arts and culture department. Although the city is supported by Creative Waco and things are going well, their capacity is also stretched as they've gone beyond their initial scope of work with the city. This means that all public art and placemaking projects are currently reactive, as you've heard me say, rather than proactive. Creative Waco is able to respond to projects within the community, but does not have the capacity to take on anything beyond what is immediately in front of them, and the city has limited resources and competing priorities. This public art strategic plan will help the city be strategic and plan for future public art and placemaking projects, policies, and programs. This will also help to ensure sustainability within the program and will continue to build upon the living document that is the plan. We also learned that accessing artworks both in their physical form and by knowing what's happening across Waco will bring the community in, in different ways. So, I mentioned that this, this plan is a living document, as we heard in, in the, um, prior presentation as well, but we really believe that having a document that can change as your community changes increases the sustainability of the program. So, just as public art is an iterative process, so is this. You don't have to do it all, and you can do what makes sense for the Waco context, right? It's a framework. So, some program goals. While things are going well right now, and it may seem that one of the models you see here is in place, it actually isn't. One of our recommendations is to adopt a city slash nonprofit public art program model for Waco with Creative Waco as the lead administrator of the public art program. The first step would be developing and executing a contract to formalize Creative Waco's role as the overarching arts entity for Waco. Currently, they're on a year-over-year contract, which does not prioritize sustainability and, um, could be precarious. It doesn't allow Creative Waco to ebb and flow with new requests or develop a strategy around public art for Waco. It would create a formalized governance structure rather than a yearly lease with Creative Waco is essentially what would happen. We did some research and found that the situation in Waco is so unique that it's difficult to find comparative cities. You have so much growth that is happening and such an amazing foundation that is built, there aren't a lot of communities of this size that are building programs in the way that we would like to here. We also, uh, recommend reviving a public art advisory board. Their main role will be to make recommendations for public artworks to the city council based upon an overall public art strategy for the city of Waco. The advisory board helps garner public interest and excitement for public art and builds awareness of projects within the community. Creative Waco has a strong history and track record of initiating and managing public art projects, programs, and budgets in close collaboration with the city. This historical knowledge and experience is a solid foundation for a public art program in Waco to blossom and continue to grow. The current contract between the city and Creative Waco will need to be expanded upon to include this new responsibility. Again, public art is currently developed in a proactive, or, sorry, in a reactive way, and building a program utilizing this structure will allow the city to be proactive and strategic about public art projects, initiatives, and activations. This will increase the time and budget required, however, the cost of this model will be lower for the city than if public art was housed within a city department with city staff dedicated to it. So, for example, the city would not have to pay benefits and other costs associated with employing city staff members. Creative Waco would be the lead administrator of the public art program and would oversee project management, budgeting, organizing meeting logistics, strategizing themes for projects, and more. We've also recommended processes for projects that are initiated by the city or Creative Waco and for projects that are initiated by artists or community members. And we also, um, have talked about how maintenance and deaccessioning of artworks are important parts of the program and have included, uh, example policies for those. Six goals were developed, uh, in collaboration with Creative Waco based upon all that was heard through our community engagement activities. Each goal has actionable tasks associated with it, and all of the goals have been laid out over the next five years to strategically and sustainably grow the public art program in Waco. Following these goals and tasks will help move forward on things that we've identified through the process, and this plan is really a toolkit to help you build a program that will be sustainable and meet goals of the city and community. So, let's take a look at these goals. Goal one is to identify and build upon existing assets. This goal includes taking an audit and inventory of everything in the current collection. This includes understanding who has received commissions, the content of artworks, artwork materials and mediums, how much artists have been paid, the socioeconomic factors of the locations of public artworks, and more. Collecting this data helps to identify gaps in the collection, which can be addressed in annual program plans. Goal two is to cultivate new relationships and build partnerships, focusing across sectors to understand how public art can meet a variety of goals. This includes convening stakeholders to find opportunities for new projects, such as artists, educational institutions, community members, longtime public art sponsors, city departments, and more. The result of this goal is further development of public and private partnerships and opening pathways to public art that don't already exist. Goal number three is creating pathways to public art that are inclusive of multiple stakeholders. This includes creating educational opportunities for stakeholders to understand the public art process and how important their involvement is. It includes developing resources about the public art process for artists to ensure that the local workforce is eligible for new projects. It includes building a sustained community engagement plan and holding events and presentations to keep the city and community updated on exciting projects. Goal number four is to formalize and democratize the public art process, governance, and management. This includes adopting the plan, creating a contract between the city and Creative Waco to manage the program, developing an annual project plan in collaboration with city staff, and determining roles and responsibilities of the advisory board. Goal number five is to develop projects that expand and celebrate community identity. This elaborates on the sustained community engagement plan and focuses on developing temporary projects that bring community members together, celebrate neighborhood organizations and community leaders, create small neighborhood grants for new projects, developing a wayfinding project to connect all of the creative parts of the city, creating marketing strategies to put Waco on the map as a key arts and culture destination along the corridor from Austin to Dallas-Fort Worth, and developing events and public space activations that are unique to Waco. And finally, goal six is to identify and secure diverse funding mechanisms. An ideal public art program has a diversity of funding mechanisms, including developers, the city, visitors, and residents. Not any one of these sources should be the whole and only answer, rather, public art funding should come from a diverse range of sources. This goal focuses on exploring and solidifying a variety of funding sources for public art in Waco, and there are recommendations in the plan around goal number six, consider work that's already been conducted. As I mentioned before, the great work done by the city attorney and the deputy city manager on a percent for art ordinance. But also listed in the plan are other funding sources that can be explored further and considered. So, the time is right. It's right for Waco to take advantage of the fast growth happening across the city. As I mentioned before, there's already a great foundation to build upon, and following the recommendations laid out in the plan will build a proactive public art program for Waco. Again, you could decide not to do anything, keep doing what you're doing now with a reactive approach that does not have an overall strategy, or you could move forward with this plan and build upon existing assets by formalizing a public art program that will integrate art into public spaces across the city, support local artists and develop the workforce, and put Waco on the map as a cultural destination that brings quality art and creative expression to the community. As Fiona likes to say, this is Waco's Di Medici moment. So, you'll see this plan again. Next up, city staff plans to bring the plan back for formal approval along with an implementation plan and timeline. Thank you very much, happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Great present, this Holmes, Holmes here. The, uh, great presentation, I love the idea and, and, uh, it seems, there's two parts to this, it seems to me. One of them is just the, like, I'm happy how you tackled or introduced both. And one of them is just this construct of Creative Waco, and I, and I think that, I think it, right, as I got on council at first, was established, and I would say it's, it's been by every measure of success under Fiona's leadership and, and the team there, and, and I, 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 I get why we maybe need to create, uh, an expectation of longevity there and not a year-to-year as you, as you mentioned. So, coming up with some sort of recurring funding mechanism or just some budget item, uh, I, I support that and I get that. The second part to me seemed, and I think I'm right here, we're talking about public art too, make it, making it, uh, uh, kind of a, a, another recurring goal of our city, which I, I love, and I, I think the, uh, when you go places, you know, you check into the hotel, then you want to go walk and go see that statue down there, and the, the public art part of it, the identity of the, of cities, like, uh, you know, Mexico City, the El Angel, the, you go to, uh, Paris, the Place Mandame, and the Trafalgar, you go to the city to see the cool public art. Uh, and I think Waco has a, you know, the Bronze Cattle Drive is a pretty cool thing, but it would be cool if we had other, other places that, that people would identify with in different parts- parts of the city. So I'm very supportive of the public art aspect of this too. Great data, nice summary, and great presentation, and I think the, I'm getting loud and clear that we need to make Creative Waco, give it some legs so we can better feel about what's coming in the next four, five, 10 years, instead of kind of holding our breath every year and, hey, are we going to, are we going to keep funding Creative Waco? So I'm supportive of it. We got to come up with some numbers and some formula and all that, but let's all keep working together on it. I appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your presentation. Jen, good to actually see you in person. I'm more, I'm probably closer to this than most, just because of my role in, with Creative Waco and the cultural arts. But I'm excited to see this program. Jim, you mentioned the way it looks and the way it was presented, all of that was intentional, and how we receive information and data, and then how it makes us feel. And I think that this was done very well in the message that we're trying to convey about what our need is for, to continue to have, continue the work of public arts and arts that we're doing in our community, but moreover, in this situation, how it's done. Jen, you, one of my questions you answered, because not an answer that I wanted to hear, but you said, because my question was what do arts, cultural departments in cities of our size look like? And you said, um, they don't. So that's not helpful, but I wanted to know if, so if we take Creative Waco out of contract, an annually contractual thing, and give it legs, as you say, is there another conversation as to what that looks and feels like? Because I assume that your scope has to increase? Yes?
Yeah, there'd have to be a conversation and then a more formalized contract. So there'd be a conversation around like what the scope is, what is Creative Waco actually responsible for, what's the role of a city staff member who might be a liaison? So there would need to be conversations to formalize that further.
Okay. And so then I'm going to ask Fiona this question. Are there any organizations in existence in this city now that do what you want to be done?
The answer is sort of. So, you know, for example, Fort Worth has a similar model where there's an external nonprofit organization that holds that contract with the city and delivers a public art program along with other cultural development. There are a number that exist in that model. It is actually, it is a known model. So when we say that there's nothing that's quite like what we're aspiring to do in Waco, the reason for that is that for a city our size in this kind of strategic location, it is highly unusual to have this much of a blank canvas, that, you know, we get to do a very defining role in terms of developing public art. So it's not as if we can compare apples to apples with what other cities have just been through or are about to go through. So it's the way, I feel like this is how we answer a lot of questions in Waco. Yes, there are good models that we can learn from and that we can absolutely draw contracts from and that sort of thing, but we want it to be Waco. We have to Waco-size this particular aspiration.
Sure. It doesn't help that we punch above our weight in most things. In your program goals, I see city and nonprofit role, but I also see city and county nonprofit role. What do you expect, I mean, what is the county doing and/or what do you expect them to do? Or what are you asking them to do?
It's in there partly because as, you know, as an organization, we serve the county also, and we have a contract with the county. It is not as extensive, and because their portfolio for developing public art is not as extensive, they at the moment do put funding towards developing the cultural district. And that is another, you know, question that we can look at further down the line as to, you know, what those different partnership roles look like.
I could be wrong, but, you know, just, for instance, if we took, including public art and how we incentivize businesses come in, so that's a direct correlation with Wedmec, so that is the county, and how we can potentially give or include them in the increase of public art in our community, just in how we do incentives. Am I wrong on that, maybe? No? Yes? Somebody? Hello?
What I would say to that is that definitely if we're creating pathways for things like public-private partnerships, if we're creating mechanisms by which developers can come in and, you know, have a portfolio of services that they can plug into, then they could do that from, you know, that could be a countywide service, for example.
And lastly, I am incredibly appreciative of this work and look forward to what we create. With blank canvases, we have an opportunity to just, you know, absolutely go nuts. But the thing that I appreciate about where we are in this time and space is that there are enough people who are intentional in this work that it is reflective of who we are and where we go without small-minded limits. So thank you for your work. Jen, it's been a pleasure working with you. Creative Waco staff is always a pleasure. The fact that you have in this room right now both artists and art advocates, you know, to help tell this story is really reflective of you and the work that you all have done. So thank you.
I'll jump in. I really think, again, incredible presentation, and I think it just dovetails so perfectly with the last presentation, because I think the culture of the city is to be strategic and proactive and make sure that we are moving forward with that in mind. Fiona and the whole Creative Waco team, I see several people here tonight, thank you all for all that you do to make Waco a more dynamic city. You know, we just got back from an inner-city visit in Phoenix, and one of the things that they really highlighted was the importance of a dynamic art scene for you to be able to attract and recruit industry to come to your city. So all of this ties together. Yes, art is important to build out a strong culture and have a good quality of life, but it's also important to build up an economy. And I think we have to keep all of that in mind as we move forward, and I appreciate, Fiona, your dedicated advocacy and work towards that and the entire Creative Waco's team to see that through. I really liked this presentation. I'm excited for us to move forward. I have a high appreciation for the strategy and the proactivity, but also I really liked a couple of the things that stood out was the expanding and building on community identity, or I think what was said is makes Waco feel unique. I really think that in the same way that in the streetscape presentation we just had, we want, when you're standing in Waco, you don't, we don't want you to question if you're in Nashville or Atlanta or Chicago, we want you to know that this looks and feels like Waco. And a strategic art plan that has that as a bullet point, the expanding and building community identity is certainly a part of that. I really also liked the pathways, pathways to public art as well. I really would love us to continue to explore that as an element too, because, you know, one of our council priorities is equity. So how do we go into communities and create clarity that this is something that our whole community can participate in? And I would love to think outside the box and engage in the diverse faith communities in the community, make sure that they understand that they have a role to play in shaping the art scene in our community as well. And so I really liked that pathways to public art component. But again, I'm so excited. I think that this is going to be one step further towards building out a dynamic scene of arts and culture in our community. Again, I'll punch our weight class, shortest guy on the varsity basketball team, a lot of sports metaphors, but I really think that really being intentional with this is going to make Waco really be a city that other places look up to and will be the model for how a city can really build something like this out. So I look forward to exploring what all this is. Again, in terms of funding and our role in that, that's going to be something that we're going to have to really press into. I appreciate the acknowledgement that there's a lot of competing needs and resources, but look forward to our continued partnership as we move forward. Any other questions or comments? Two great presentations today. It was really exciting.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, we're not going to press our luck in seeing if Clint's presentation is as good.
I know it would be. I know it would be.
No, we need, we have so much to, we have an executive session to accomplish as well as a reception, and I think at 5:45, we're going to have a surprise out in the parking lot, perhaps, for you to look at, the public to look at. So Clint, we're going to move you to the business session. You'll just do your presentations there, and if that suits you, mayor. Does that sound like a good plan?
The Bradley Ford Clint Peters, "We Don't Have Time" gig is getting to the point of Jimmy Kimmel and Matt Damon where, sorry, we don't have time for Matt Damon tonight.
Which one am I? Am I Jimmy Kimmel?
You'd be Kimmel in that, in that.
Good for both of us, really. I would say. Okay, yeah, so that will, I'll turn it over to Michelle.
Attorney briefing, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.071. ET AL versus Time Warner Cable Texas LLC DBA Spectrum and Charter Communications, case number, cause number 619CV00345, pending in the United States District Court of the Western District of Texas, Waco Division, Rural Property Texas Open Meetings Act 551.072, and Economic Development Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.087. We are now in executive session.